Altamane and councilors, town clerk and council management, members of the public here present, our strategic partner, who are broadcasting us. We welcome you to our... It's 3,000... It's 3,372nd meeting of the city of Bulawayo. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we all aware that for the past few days or few weeks, there have been some reports going around in social media and in some printed press about council disbanding the municipal police Omakoko. So I think it is very important for this august house to make it clear and clear and clear, so that those who are willing to listen, those that have got the city at heart will understand the position of the city. Or then leave those that don't want to listen. It's fine. So this is the position on that matter. A newspaper article clarified their thing was like "disbanding of the municipal police." With the reference made to the article titled "The PCC to Disband Municipal Police" published in the Chronicle of Wednesday 28th June 2023, and article on various platforms alluding to the above. Please be advised that this is not the position of the city of Bulawayo. A report outlining various revenue collection strategies was submitted to a special general purposes committee on the 1st of June 2023, and several interventions were proposed, including replacement of the city council municipal police at the revenue hall with private security camera. Replacement of city council permanent staff in the revenue hall with contract workers, and reopening of Kotama market. These were revenue revenue collection strategies that were submitted in the special general purposes committee. The above proposals were not approved or adopted by council. So meaning to say, the proposals were brought with normalists behind bringing those proposals in a meeting, but they did not carry the day. In other ways, there was no position and no resolution on that. They were actually thrown into the dustbin. So there is nothing like that. We further we further state that council has no plan to disband any of its sections, nor convert permanent employees' contracts of employment to fix the term contract. The city of Bulawayo does not also carry out such actions without consulting the relevant stakeholders, workers union, and affected employees. Stakeholders are requested to take note the official position stated above. So I think the matter is now clear that it was someone who was spreading what he wanted to spread. Thank you very much. We'll now ask the town clerk to bring the question to the house.
City management and staff, esteemed members of the public and the ladies and gentlemen of the meeting. Illegal person being confirmation of minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 7th of June 2023 attached as an extra A, page is A2O. Thank you, Oshif.
Thank you. What does the house say? Thank you. Item two, in the report of... All I'm signing. In the report of Future Water and Action Supplies Committee, we'll ask councillor Esmo, the chairperson of the committee, to give us the report.
I know that the report of the Future Water Supplies and Water Action Committee meeting held on the 6th of June is submitted, be received and the various recommendations contained there in be adopted.
Any seconda? Seconded by Altamane E. Rafa Moyo. Any issues arising from the report? Thank you. Health, Housing and Education Committee will ask the chairperson of the day, councillor Esmoyo, to give us a report.
I move that the report of the Health, Housing and Education Committee meeting held on the 13th of June 2023 is submitted, be received, and the various recommendations contained there in be adopted.
Any seconda? Welcome. Seconded? Any issues arising from the report? Councillor Patiraya?
Okay, thank you, Oshif. Mr. Chair, we have so many unregistered outlets in the city, but currently I have a new thought. I think it's better for us to, so as to curb unnecessary outlets. I think it's better for you to make sure that those outlets are registered and at least you inspect them, so that at least they will work according to council, to at least council bylaws, so that at least to curb an outbreak of diseases like cholera. It's on itself. I thank you.
Thank you.
Siya wongakosi. See, item six, Lapana, ingitando uti nganazalele, ngama klinika. Uka na kule mza nyewo, zanyewo. Ngama klinika uti, kunava ngama klinika ma nia, ama site klinika ma ngani ngavula. Loko ngunazalelo uti isa kamisika kulu, ngkulu melengecha. Ve kusitwala ogu ubi kakuulu, lapa suga kachana njengemkanin. Kota kono ko, kono kisite klinika. Ogungani, kuzainetisa. Kakuulu amantabanjongo boko, kobe suga. Mkanin bebe enketa, gabesu kuse duzha, nukuti beefika, Lapana kusite klinika yavu. Stando uti sugunazalele. Si wonge kuno kumserezo, tu ngakoveka Lapanbili. Kuvula kukuulu keliwa kona, loko siya wong.
Councillor M. Moyo?
Thank you, Oshif. Still on the mic there. I also want to applaud the judgment of your health for such one of the project that you have been in Mkanin for three time. We are going to have a pay. But also I'd like to to say I'm disappointed. There are investors that I brought to the council, donors who did this. They asked for a written communication that if the council, we were in agreement that they can donate to Mkanin. I'm very disappointed. But I had to make a follow up for say, it took me two weeks to get a response from the director of here. I'm so disappointed. And those donors, they predicted that in the past, they wanted to donate something to the council. Unfortunately, the letters did not come through and they ended up not donating. So it's a time people want to assist us. If you are saying council does not have money and you understand the fourth micro, it's a micro economy can borrow me, that is occurring in our part. But then you have someone who comes in and say, "I want to donate to you." And you have got a director who can't even write a letter to say to the donor. It's so painful. We are not giving it. Send it to our people. And I'm not here to give it. Like what you think. I hope it's the last time that if you have to get in donors, you are treated like this or you are treated in that manner. It's very unprofessional and I'm not giving such a thing.
So that's what we must say. The director will cut it right.
I don't know, but I do make a follow up until I do phone the town clerk, which was a necessary. After two weeks, I was completely in it. I'm saying that I'm saying to you. But it didn't send it yet. It took me about two to three weeks, which is very unprofessional. At the end of the day, we lose donors because of that. And like I said, they indicated that in the past they approached council to make a donation, but someone slept on their joint. They, even the meeting that we had, they indicated that actually they are wishing for those donations. So when they come to us in the city of Bulawayo, if you are not coming, they just simply move their donations elsewhere where they are welcomed. So let's not allow our directors to sleep on joint. We don't get them, but if they are sleeping on joint, if they say the data in the next two or three days after the meeting, we'll not be debating on these key issues. We'll be debating on issues that have started to move our city forward.
It is a good point that council are doing. Then when someone wants to give, there's a notice, a note should be shown. But we are all aware that we are I think it's not our problem.
And I think we should make it available, it on donation policy that we adopted. And it must be made public. Those that wish to donate must have knowledge of it. And on top of that, then the challenge comes, the stiffness, the response that we do towards that. Honestly, when someone wants to give you $1,000, it is in his pocket. You can't take two weeks to respond. So I think when the donors approach us as council, we should, we must swiftly respond by referring to our donation policy as a matter of urgency, so that people can correct where they might be wrong. Because at the end of the day, the people of Bulawayo must benefit. But what we are not, we will not accept are donations that are attached. Are donations that have got ama yati klemkoko. Utae Lapana donate akuzala chabago mbe kupela. Yeah, Lapana inza so. So those are, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's the donation economy Mkanin. I'm now referring the new watch on out to us here in China, yet dialysis. So we will not, ama donations do have a, a council donation policy. So council and government, we thank you for raising that. And I think the town clerk hit that. Next time, they will move with speed. Thank you. Altamane Rafa?
Thank you, Oshif. Maybe, yes, we might need some response, but not here. Basically, donations to the city should go there.
To the town clerk. Then the town clerk directs to the department. So basically, Oshif, oti si kuremele si buze silele ma ansa on this item. Because siwele ma, si so kute kato waha manjan, but maybe, koto ora ma donation ngayabuya, kumele abuya town clerk's office. Yet no town clerk's office, use si taiki donation lake, kaya kwe health department, kaya kwe engineering, kaya kwe different departments, alas, we town clerk. So maybe the story ka, ka owner ekumua. Iwe funa siwele, local interface, si buza, a ne kute kato waha manjan. But anyway, we expect to do any donation where we are, we are through the right procedure. But that does not stop councilors from sourcing for donations. So I think we are clear there. Councillor Mavutu?
Thank you very much, Oshif. I believe that in fact, first and foremost, before I go, the other side is to afflu the department. I'm told that there are two clinics coming on board. Either one maybe around Maturu and this one from Kamin. Now coming to the issue raised by the fellow colleague here, I think it's unfair to interlocute him. When a councillor has raised a concern, it's a concern is in charge of that particular one. And we don't expect in this chamber that usopu weyindau ngataye minangakuveka da. Se si taas, ya kare, si sa du ti, ogue hensu ti kumeke kubeni. In other words, it will be like the councillor is lying. So let's respect the genuineness of the comment of the councillor. It is very clear. It is not the first time we have a problem with this department, Oshif. And right now, I'm being sincere and honest. Yes, it's not the first time. So I believe councillor Moyo's concerns are very genuinely valid. We have to treat them with seriousness and move with speed. This council or this city cannot expect honesty, Oshif, for a donation to website that it was tender. Umnozo ni gaji. Two weeks! Until the councillor to seek audience with the chief accounting officer, the town clerk. I think if the director is listening, he has to pull up his sources. Thank you.
When you are here, I'll give you a opportunity. When you are here, the man who is very answerable to this house is this one sitting next to me. So can we kindly give orders to him? Because when you give orders to directors, if you say to director, "Write letter A", maybe has been given a task by his immediate post to write letter Z. So then you'll be charged for you know, the director will be charged of refusing to take orders. So let's give this man next to me here orders and he is the one. So meaning to say, councillor Moyo, the person who failed to write a letter is this one sitting next to me, not the director. So I'm trying to say.
I think I'm with the number of the committee. I think si zule eki concern eh, da Moyo, councillor Moyo, eh, njenge committee, I think si za gu, ndangimela. Si gu kamele si se. Si gu committee. Uti si koli, uti wa pana si se.
Oshif, asaz, uti fungasang, kotoa si kempilo tu kona, mto story zengosi, masakuluma ogu. Mbona ngani, Oshif, angenechale. Oshif, mbona ngani, uposwa ebeka uxi. Uti na ngitwale umuntu ofu nukusisi zubulawayo, ikonawa ofis kavano. That is very, very, very important, Oshif. Angi udu kankia uro uti, uwa uandu mneti siwele. And one as a, uti nganyi i concern, ewa kona kula jo, it was better off nganyi ifa kema kande, nino tula kona leo ubuileyo, uwo natoa, nino tuka ubuilego Bulawayo, kutangunkieki. Asa uchi diapana ngani, diapana ngani, vela ukavati oreti. O ikini kagonaga vifshinala ngiti. Kotoa ngari vifshinala, lu yauta, vito de konangari. Igusita ngarazu uti, itona, itonishla konya ngaya nseki. But uka ti uti ni, sazi ni njenga madi ta zugu ti, na umuntu esu approach ili, uyangaapi. Angin sorry siwele, i concernaki i very, very, very valid. But attacking u director, mbona ngani, we misplaced in the chat. Moba, sorry.
I'm cheering.
Sorry, Ruzibe, uka. Mbona ngani, Oshif, nasila apa, we should be attacking the committee. And that is very, very important. We was going to attack ha na ngiti. I mistake, eh, jo, u directa weyutu ni committee. Chelatina, si umu neti si se. No tu uti part wa manju uti, we na umenule utu rohu. Oh rohu yitina uchepe se nyo turo. So I think it's important to uti, we take responsibility, council uti ni. Kukonu kaza gala ogu, ogu rohu ngani. But ogu uti uta zasi uwa zitu uyi ni. Maybe you have told the town clerk, la, la nasu uthule, ute uchepe se nuetu. And ogu uti uden du enje. La ewa zutu uden njalo. Eh, we emla nu te wazuti, useli ansa yankona, uduwa shkwa banjan. Then, Oshif, uzo xwa la ma unregistered food outlet. Achone kucho ngo ba ba la ba u councilo mu. Mbona ngani, Oshif, lasa msa yasa xu uti si, fredu uti a bisi, ngoba kunzi, mo uwa na pinduwa unregistered ta ngiti. Ngoba da siya tinapi, nwea yasi. Ifa nasni ki tariki u tai, one to amnani ti uti kijimwee Lapana. Siya bze kijimwa, bze kwa, ngomispe la kisimula oke ti uti inapi. So it's important uta snige in, in doubt, i hintutai, Lapana kijio ulumto unregistered, Lapana ngiti. Ubi se pras, uktumto unulela siwele si gala yu ngiti. Koba kua uchi ngisaa. So nte uti edisi we wazu uti, in doubt, kona ucha ipi, si du ucha i rohu kowulawayo. Ogue xilama postura koseleke again. Niya wonge, Oshif.
But chairman, justice to what you're saying. It's a norm. He doesn't need to pick an outlet and say this one. It is a norm that you and your sister departments should inspect these outlets, whether it's a practice store, whatever, in town. If you get the ones with no licenses, deal with them. If they have got, if we'll be happy when this city has got everyone having a license. Anyway, they are saying you must bring the report to them. So please do that. Thank I.
Say, apa, apa inspectuwe yu ngiti. You go back on our report today. So uzi ngabe ngikoba ngispe, tell by be se swa, uji ti dona, afarache ebe. There's nothing wrong with that. And it, yakte la utra bishet, palate lele. Koba kina tula oti ya shampu kileya, si uni koli ra kowulawayo.
Thank you.
Oshif, thanks for ito wa u impelo. On item nine, Lapana kulu ma himsi ligas building and maintenance workshop. Niya igoni reporti yabo insheka ko. But ngi lombo zo u commit. Uti eh, msi ligas Gwati Eight, kula ma toilets I Three, Hado Nekwai, I N G O. Ya lu isama toilet lana, kume achi aksida ngani uti keti se waka waha manjan. I see I saw, ngoba aki iwi. Then is a kamisese zineta panse, which is fitting the purpose of helping those toilets in the better place. Because ama toilet uwa uti kuna ngoni. Mani ngase ya kiwe ya kiwa, then is a kamisese zulisa panse. So umbozo wa ucommiting, uti gambe, when are they intending to finish up ama toilet umserezo ngana wasalayo? Uti officially as a color nini, use jense si swa is a kamis. That's my question to the committee. Then the second issue, Oshif, eh, my understanding, nyagutama committees, nga, si Lapana, ule reporti ya, uti swa show misi. Si lete imbono, ezaba ngetis, uti aba kuli si committee, lumserezoa. But the train, the same, yibona Lapana, mbona ngani, is very wrong, Oshif. Train, elapa, Oshif. Amma committee members, alanda uzo tifend. I'm pointing to anyone. I'm just gesturing. Amma committee members, asele, alles is timi u tifenda. Amma member so, this is council. A letter amos, zinabona, wasuma u tifend. I wa iligenza, so wa iligenza. Then umuntu tifend, dahera tati advice, will never grow and will never learn. Best seller uti this house, you can say the latest. You understand the economy. Agula umuntu attack fire, uko criticizewa. Lapas uzo ngeti san, uti councili ti sebeze, uko siya panse. So si trela ba, you frey in a from, uti tifend. Uwa tifend, dahera won't learn. Uza salu njali, uta nda etu, uwa funda. Moba yavu tifend.
Thank you, Councillor.
Ah, with George, with George. With George.
But councillor Ndo, councillor Ndo. What we should know, well, I don't want to comment on the subject discussed in a donation. But when committees go and sit, we expect them to use their brains to make resolutions. So when they come here, we don't expect them to put a resolution there in wrong. But they must justify to us why they made the resolution. Because when they come here and sit a resolution wrong, we are, we are, we are, we are so cities, why is this more confirmed to what they do? Thank you, I know it's right. He spoke about issue about toilet account of wrong. I think that is what is worth a response.
Thank you. Thank you so much. No, thank you so much. Anyway, to all councilors, all your concerns are noted. To what aid councillor, we have noted your concern, we look into it. Ogunyo kaga tegle, uti ka umeleang, mellele full council. We have to advise irrelevant department. We could have dealt with it.
But you come out of this dealer like committee, not individual. You are contradicting yourself. Come out of say, you should in that project. Do I sit in your committee? I don't sit in their committee, Oshif. They say to shoot in that project. Now we are protesting for things wrong.
Koga unpendu, Oshif.
Suspect.
Councillor Mavutu?
Thank you very much. About the issue raised by councillor Ndo. I believe they are very genuine. But for a committee chairperson to say, you don't need to wait for council. Because he is meeting the report now and we are interrogating their report. Allow, Oshif, allow me to speak. This is not a kind of country, Oshif. It's a no caste house, Oshif. Eh, no, no, no. Yes. That is what we are dealing with, Oshif. What statements others that are making that are not in the court? Yes. But, Oshif, you can't get me. I have to express myself on a similar item on the but because I'm speaking on something which is related to the matter which has been tabled before this. Right. So for a committee chairperson,[1556.63]
It's just a suggestion to the committee. As we are winding our term of office, I want to suggest that maybe we need a report that talks to all outstanding works, works that were started by government and they never materialized, they never came to fruition. I think we want to do a proper handover, so that those that are coming can see how much we have done as a council and also where we have stolen projects and the reasons thereof. So it's just a suggestion to the committee if they can do that, so that also we will be proud to say, look at what we have done, look at what government has failed to do. For the past three years, I've been standing here, your worship, talking about Guanda Road. I know that that is a national road, but they promised they never finished, they never started actually, not finished. I talked about Sisi Road from Marari Road. So please, as my person, to your worship, it's a heavy heart, your worship, to see all those projects, stalling the way they have stalled. I emphasize that we need a report that talks to that, so that the ones that are coming, I know that they are very proud, therefore had started to criticize this council, to say these councillors have been failing and going forward really, we also need to measure them, where they took off and what they will be doing. So please, committee, produce a report. We want to see whether there are twenty-nine projects, I know that they are around there, what has happened and where we are, so that we move forward. Thank you.
First, before what your worship, I just want to thank someone, I'm still trying to think. So I want to thank members of the Finance Committee for assisting engineering in terms of procurement of the yellow machines, your worship. I think we need to give them a power. We have made a difference, your worship. We're almost going without even commissioning one single yellow machine, but we've done it, your worship. Suffice to say, your worship, then, like in my word particularly, I had one road called Ephobia, which was given to a contractor to be re-graveled, right, so over three years now. And the problem is always been contractors, they always fail us, but now we've got our own machine. Just as I send off to your finance chair, please may that road be done, Ms. Chairman, because you want to go on your program already. I really appreciate, your worship, if such projects, which had stalled, can just be finished off now that we've got our own machine. Thank you so much, your worship.
Thank you, your worship. I want to talk to item eighteen percent issue. If you recall, your worship, in past some past cities, I raised these issues and I was promised that by the committee that they are going to look into the issue of Amasua hotspots. But until now, there is not much that has been done and I want to report to you that there are some houses, as you speak, that has been abandoned because of the sewer challenges that we are facing. To the committee, what is your plan concerning this? Because we cannot be talking about this forever and forever without any solution being put in place. Thank you, your worship.
Your worship. Niabu ngubu nga ngonanti, your worship. Sorry, Chairman Shunka. N'asugunga fawo sugume mina ngubu nga. Councillor Gora, mbona ngani, umbono kwa is very, very, very good. Mbona ngani, let the department saibisi report ya kona, gula sti, gula sti, councilier tye zaba kona tingo Okaasti. Saibisi report ya kona le. Then, your worship, ntezi, tye okuma tisfu ni ma da ngiti. Ancho ngutimba di fu ti siyabunga hach. N'efunu ngute di sti, siyela tse, si fa so your worship, asbula wa, asbula wa, na abantu wa kubla wa pesi. Si bula ngukurumende tu izinar. Ani tye abonu utu, but your worship puti, ngabe imali epa tala, ngamote saka mele nsele nsele ancho. Zinkena kubla wa yo ngapa, ngabe kukini ngakulu. N'labonu tige maringane si tete, eza kamizi ncho. Isie zume kikwanga na ngubla wa. So, ngabe, nganfumu tu kuru mendaka tis, izinar aegi menbi chana. Ngai tate imali, eema troke, tsumitati ngawa zense. Kotimtelu, ibe egiti, ngaba ngono ngakulu, your worship. The end of Amasua de, very planned, I should allow the councillor. As if uni, issue a very tubu. N'enzela, issue fa saka mele, fa ike ne stichini hambie wela ngapi. La bo tito kona amanza, kona abese kambesi ngapi. Etame se kini. But, kolo ng'joguti, smali siya shota, siya sida yapala lapana, pasia zahama. Kubla wa se mkuu, aniti. N'uguti, aman ya malo cha se madala. Kaba la mo collapses, pambe, weenda, ubenzi, muguti, ma ibo nu kala so ngati ngabwa kona eksekut. Igbo za muti sti ngimchina katesu, ugu ti, isu one, ugu ti adwe, nu kala slengapi wa kona eksekut. Se si kulevi ra zio katesu. N'tema, go, this be gezelele, kuza lunga council. Yate mbayu bi very happy. Kuza vila so ngutota viliyo council. Niabu nga, your worship, koto bula wa, n'tembo, oseza ngenesi right. Agona kadi, manis mentila, n'tembeile me. Ta onkliaki nditembeile. N'egu bula wa ya afancho, koto ya zeyfu sa li na ba, aba fa. Niabu nga, me.
Thank you, your worship.
Aba fara meza. Item ba, twenty-one.
I recall that there was also a donor, was it a donor investor? Ansakumburi design gondes. Who wanted to do all our street lights. Again, I want to send a request to the committee to produce a report, what happened to that investment that was coming again for free. It was not going to cost council anything. Someone was going to light the whole city, all streets, and put advertising material. And so there was that arrangement. So please, committee, before we call, can you again produce a report? And tell the whole world what happened to that. Linga kofa, ringa kahambi, this is in the report channel. Thank you, your worship.
Councillors, we now move to the report of Town Plan, Town Plan and Planning Committee. We'll ask the chairperson of the committee, Councillor P. Moyo, to give us the...
Thank you, your worship. I move that the town of the, sorry, I move that the report of the Town Plan and Planning Committee meeting held on the twentieth, June twenty twenty-three is submitted, be received. And the various recommendations contained therein, be adopted.
What have I said? Any issues arising from the report? What have I said?
Move.
Now we move to the report of the Report of the General Conference Committee Meeting held on the twenty-sixth, sorry. I move that the report of the General Conference Committee Meeting held on the twenty-third of June is submitted, be received, and the various recommendations contained therein be adopted.
Young second, young seconda? Seconded? Any issues arising from the report? Thank you. We now move to the report of Finance and Development Committee. We'll ask the chairman to... Report us equipment.
At least I can tell you. Thank you, your worship. I move that the report of the Finance and Development Committee Meeting, held on the twenty-seventh of June twenty twenty-three, is submitted, be received, and the various recommendations contained therein be adopted. Thank you, your worship.
Any seconded? Seconded? Any issues?
Thank you, your worship, again. Thank you Finance Committee for collecting revenue. But it's now one, almost one and six months. We are still waiting for smart parking as promised. But we are only seeing lines being drawn on port holes. So we urge you, the committee, say that you do... We urge the committee to give citizens fair services, so that at least they will appreciate your efforts.
Councillor Gora, can you say to the Engineering Committee? Can you say to Engineering Committee?
Yeah, I'm talking about finance.
No, I'm saying, I'm just asking, do you see the Engineering Committee?
Yes.
Thank you. Actually, what this committee does is to receive money. Whether it's from smart parking or grid parking or historians parking, they just receive money. The person who draws those lines, who manages, who draws that line, who maintains that project here. It's you who must maintain the road. So here, what you have for the money that you will receive. Thank you very much. Any issue? What have I said about the report? I know, there is nothing to explain because it does not present this committee's point. Actually, we translate to committee, so that you respond to him. Councillor P. Moyo.
I can't explain this yet.
To the committee, I think it's important, ugu ti si kasi selle ama residents on their bills. Ani tye inflation ya kwe, labata lava yabebe ngakwas. Lastly, they would pay you almost twenty-five thousand, katesu babona ma kili se ngama two-hundred-and-sixty. And iba vesave kange, ugu ti se si kupulile ini indeno. Ugniya, kala ugu ti kweati ngaga, ugu ti di explain, ugu ti, ubenza ubenjalo gui yimi. Abata lava n'ngba bebe ngakwas. Ugu ti inflation, di kugege uben sobal. Ugu ti ubenza galani. Ngoba batalava n'ngba etliyo kupata lava, kaba ugu ti ba aru choi council. Ngama pinza kona kona.
Thank you, your worship. I also want to ask the committee, are they, what are they doing with our money, is doing, when this inflation is in there?
They are not working out on, they are not, actually, they are not financing our project, as expected.
Which project?
The water detention fund project. Now, anything, so that we give the committee a response. Councillor Moyo, and then Councillor Mokwe.
Thank you, your worship, on the same item.
Which?
Item thirteen, here at attention. Well, I remember last time we debated debate. But it seems, ugu ti Tina, the sense, it talk show, ugu ti just come and say things, but no one would have to implement. Si unfortunate, si lava n'yebe, tavaebe, aberu ya vesuero, your worship. Good way be pongo, ti taas, ya boi, committee leg, management. But there were over two and five. Yeah, asking the West Councillor, he can't understand, he to pay, to pay that bill so late. But we write a map proposal, so ugu ti, here at attention, so nothing appears. In what is a small office. So, I was, ugu ti, says pongo buya, he, labasiso kulu ma nothing, I will not do implement that. I was expect to ugu ti, is a company's way to implement, while this is their management, yabe, he kangele, SS ten, SS ten department, and they are not doing anything. Miniwa at attention, yamse ngai later. Cadence silly, this is my second year, new council, I will not tell that is why. Inflation ya pongo bui cha ya. But we come here to debate, moba, and I remember, with last time, our debate was very heated up. It's come out at attention. But still up to now, says we have fifty longer school, school now wait. Thank you.
On this issue of water detention, your worship, I believe that something must be done so that we don't keep coming here to make noise. Is it a scam? What kind of animal is it, number one? My learned colleague, Councillor Gora, in one of the council meetings, he said, whatever you are, whatever you are, the belief or the understanding was that there shall be a separate account for each and every word, where this money can be limited, right? No, you can, of course. It is my right to say whatever I want to hear. Then the committee will respond. The reason why things are not moving, let's revisit this animal, I remember it was the twenty-sixteen or the twenty-seventeen Council Resolution, which came with water detention. It has got a constitution. What does the constitution of water detention say? We need to fully understand it, so that we don't come and do popcorns here, your worship. When we know the contents of that constitution, it will guide us as policymakers here, right? So that maybe we don't criticize, okay, lapana, go oncha, go oncha, go oncha. Your worship. Secondly, when I said my proposal, I don't need to follow it. It's wrong. Because we have got somebody we have employed to do that job.
Ilonka, chupi, ilonka cha, of course. Igupare, likua, ngutienza, so, so, manager, ngula, ndela, office niyako. Kichima, na wa office, agani, asa. The my role is very simple, as a policymaker. You formulate a policy, you have got oversight role. N'ase ngila, ndela, kichima, lapana, lapana, I think I will be involving myself or interfering with the executive. Do you understand? They know what they are supposed to do when the paper is tabled before them. They know that they are supposed to communicate, look councillor, what you said, yeah, this is, whether in writing or through a phone call. So may this issue of water detention cause, I think Finance Committee, before we also go, we have been requested this Engineering Committee. So I want to charge the Finance Committee right now, your worship, that they must also produce a report before we go. What did they do? How many projects did they finance? In the twenty-nine woods, the projects which were submitted, which were supposed to finance as Finance Committee, so that we do a proper handoff. Thank you, your worship.
Councillor Chigwar? Then Councillor Mokwe will work.
Committee.
Hey, water detention. It is very unfortunate that in every council, we are talking about it and not understand it. It's either we understand, we understand it, but we, with something that is getting into our heads, we don't like it. But that is what it is. Last council, I spoke about it to say, as long there is no separate account, Councillor Mabut, you talk about it today and next council you talk about it. So please, can you fix, help us fix that one? Please don't stand up again in the next council, as long you know there is no separate account for it. Let's forget about it. It was whether by default or by design or, I don't know, you can put a word suitable. So, yes, three percent retention is taken from the residents, but it's supposed to be deposited somewhere, so that it is not used. So if you are saying yes, then we are together. I think I've answered that one, I've attempted to answer that one. Is smart parking? I am not very sure what you call smart. Because when you go there, you park, you are supposed to pay. That's the deal. So when you are asking, ugu ti, we want it to be smart.
What is smart?
Please elaborate what you mean. You are getting into parking, you pay. Maybe you are saying you are paying more than what you are affording, I'm not very sure. If that is the subject, we have always said, what is the fair figure? No one in this council and even the residents, even in my own groups, my residents groups, I've said to them, how much is fair? We started with a dollar per thirty minutes. We then went, listened to the people, we said a dollar for an hour. There are people who are saying still it's expensive. So what is, how much? How much do you think it should be? And please justify. Because you can't just take a figure from the air and say, from a dollar, we want to pay thirty cents, that is what we can afford. Because that's what people are saying. Please, charge us what we can afford. Who is charged what he is able to pay in this country? Any transaction you do, any, from school fees, bus fare, the coke that you drink, your, whatever. There is no transaction in this world that is based on what you can afford or what you want. It is based on cost recovery issues. So let's start from there. If you feel really there is something wrong about this parking business, just bring that to the committee, your suggestions, your submissions, and the committee will sit down and look at it. But remember, this contract was already signed based on these issues, on how much is the partner going to pour into the business? How is he going to recoup his money? It was based on these figures that we are talking about. So smart, maybe you are referring to those magnets that we started with. You want to see a magnet on the parking bay, then you will be satisfied, that is the smart. I'm not very sure. I think I've tried to respond to that. Inflation, your worship. Ah, ugu ti kula monto ngawazi, ugu ti kula inflation, lapais, mba bula? I'm not very sure. Ukoko ya was inflation. Moba ngamnigi fifty, fifty pound. Uya kuseli ti male, as a seven. You are already talking about inflation. Try it with your kid, with your young boy, alderman. Going to school, give him fifty pound. He will tell you, ugu ti. He will not mention inflation, but he will tell you, ugu ti, this money does not buy. So out there, people know that the money that we are offloading into council is not buying. This is why everyone is going for zipit, ekokesh. The only business in town kates. What is it all about? People come from home into town, sit by the corner without any cent. By the end of the day, they have got money, they go back home. When I was growing up, it was never the case. You don't get into town without a cent and then you have money when you go back. That's not an economy. So this council, your worship, will never move forward unless the national economic fundamentals are addressed, unless inflation, I've heard today, they are saying the growth rate, GDP has gone up by six percent. We are used to, 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 okay, thank you, your worship, please, teach these people.
Thank you so much, your worship. You know, as I live in Oga, see, your worship, one thing I'll miss, the Finance Committee, it's got very robust members who are like, they make my life very easier. Your worship, I was talking to one resident. Anyway, let me just answer Councillor Moyo first on bills. You're saying, they were paying twenty-five thousand, now they're paying two-hundred-and-six, that's? That translates to about thirty-three dollars? Thirty dollars? Remember, our budget was twenty-nine dollars. So basically, a total of ten, two dollars increase was with inflation which was talking about. I think the biggest challenge we have with our residents out there is Tina, is councillors who are failing to explain indexing, inflation, which is what is talking about. Before, well, the world bears with that, Tina, is ourselves as councillors. I would tell you, we not have so many problems. Because the challenge we have is in Pumola, for example. Because that's why they failed to then tell the residents why they have to pay two-hundred-and-six thousand. Your worship, that bill, that bill, I think we take it for granted, the statement from council. It talks of five kiloliters for free. People are saying, we can't see it, where is free here? But if you can't then explain to them that your first five kiloliters is for free. I'm answering to you. Your question is, what, 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 paying twenty-five thousand? Accepted. Okay. Okay, no, okay, I will, through the chair obviously. Okay, then the issues are around projects financed by water detention. I don't want to also over emphasize on the process, where it starts from, show, going to submit your, 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 your project there, maybe you go direct to electrical, depending on what project you are doing. Finance is not involved at all in all those processes. Until someone from electric comes and say, I've got a PV here, I want this to be paid. Even president fails to pay, then have an issue with finance. Those hours is to pay, why? Just gatekeepers. We don't decide whether to pay or not. We are told you have to pay because my vote is there. We don't have any job to do in this finance. Your money, water detention fund, please apply as normal through the process, especially for those who are remaining. You continue to enjoy the water detention and please continue to follow the processes. Like who, Councillor Moyo, was talking of his project two years ago, I'm not so sure what project it was. But for as long as you are going to build a clinic, it's a capital project, before you know it, you do the numbers, you are above ten thousand, they will tell you have to go through a ten. So, I'm sorry, I'm talking through the chair so that you can also come through. Depending on whatever project they are doing. If it's a capital project, it will always stall because if it goes beyond certain numbers, then you could feel like one up. I'm just saying, maybe what we need to do is to revisit this water detention and say, let it work for us, maybe it's not working for us. I think that should be the challenge. The challenge is not finance. Finance is very clear about what they need to do when they get an invoice. Thank you, your worship.
On other note, Chair, I think these water detention projects are coming onto the wrong comment. I think the committees that are affected by the project should be the one reporting to council because you cannot finance what you have not been given. So maybe the papers will be not complete, then the councillors will then say, the Finance Committee is not doing its job. So I think we have been, I think the wrong committee has been managing this thing. So I think we need a department, I'm happy because this council resolves, we have monitoring and evaluation officer. I think the coming in, when the time is right, when the person comes in, then the project will move, move. What have I said?